Juan, the hour is 4:01. Welcome to this special call. Bless you, bless you. Special called meeting of the Danville City Commission. We're all present and the purpose of today is to have discussion on the proposed changes to the city zoning ordinance and any related policy issues. Mr. Scott, I will let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be happy to begin our conversations today with the preface that these changes, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, have taken a period of time for them to review and to discuss and they're coming before you now, even though we did a part of those changes back in April. But the changes, at least for me to understand, are rather significant and comprehensive, which is why I wanted us to just have a pause in our approval process or to have a full consideration of the approval process, to make sure that the changes that are being recommended are ones that we are good with. And we may be good with these, or we may be good with some amendments to these, but as I understand it procedurally, you know, we have the opportunity of amending them or rejecting them within a certain calendar, or having them become effective with no action. And I believe that calendar runs through maybe the third week or fourth week of November. So we don't have a great deal of time. They are complicated. I had a very good conversation with Steve Hunter, our Planning and Zoning Director, last Thursday, and he, at my request, developed some responses to the staff paper that we generated earlier. And I think, to a great degree, brought clarity to some of those questions. These are a little bit down in the detail of planning and zoning, these questions that were asked and responded to. And I guess generally, one of my and other staff's concerns originally were whether we're avoiding some necessary discussion by consolidating two public hearing processes down to one. And I understand that there are administrative issues that may be addressed. At the end of the day, though, I think under this process, we still have a review process by Planning and Zoning in one public meeting that has been amended to be limited to more generic or general commercial development without the site plans that we had looked at before. Now, that may be fine in the name of development and in the name of some discussion in planning and zoning one time, but it's a bit different than we have done previously. And I think we should be aware of that. If we're good with it, that's fine. If we're not, we should talk about that, or whether that's what we desire as a city and a community. The other thing, you know, that I had raised earlier, a week ago, was no height requirements. And Mr. Hunter, when thinking about that, did say, "Well, you know, maybe we need to modify those." And we do have some changes for maybe differing height requirements in industrial and commercial versus residential or downtown commercial areas. So I think that was a good byproduct of our discussion, and we'll talk about those with you as well. And then, we have, between the city and the county, we have some need to reach agreement on a number of things. One of those seemingly is the question, basically, of where shall we develop? And, you know, the idea that we can develop down every country road and put in one acre or less housing with sewers attached is inconsistent with our water quality service area requirements that we are required to follow by the state. And so I think there's some, which is an area larger than the incorporated area of the city, which Earl Coffee could elaborate on to greater ability than I'm speaking here. So I think we have a need for communication with the county on some of those issues, too, because we do need to grow, but for tourism, or we're spending, you know, tourists are spending $90 million a year in our lovely Boil County, they won't come to see another subdivision in Nicholasville if it's down every country road, and I'll just say that, and nor is it consistent with protecting our watershed and our quality of water here. And so we have some opportunity to understand more completely the benefits and any negative aspects of these proposed changes. And that's what this hearing, I think, is all about. And there may be different views, and it could be or could not be. I think the biggest thing is just understanding the proposed changes and how they are consistent with growth as we hope to achieve, and consistent with environmental quality and quality of life. That is a big reason why people come to this community and stay in this community and want to move to this community. So those are general statements, and they may not be as specific as necessary as we look at these individual elements being requested for approval. But I wanted to kind of set the stage, really, if I could, with those introductory comments. And I do want to follow up just very briefly with asking Earl before we get into the detailed questions and reviews, just to comment upon the water best practices that we're required to follow here in Danville and Boil County.
Well, the City Commission has a, what's called a Facilities 201 Plan, that creates a buffer where we are required to contemplate how an area grows, so that as it grows, then the Commission has an opportunity through an administrative process or otherwise to intellectually decide whether or not that occurs on sanitary sewer service, so that there is a stop check between the expansion of the number of septic systems versus the expansion of the public sanitary sewer service, which is deemed an environmental benefit. Correct. And so the ultimate goal of that is to prevent situations like the Cardinal Drive area on the northeast end of town, on Lexington Avenue, where there's no sanitary sewer service, but you have a population of homes on septic. Also, for example, on Bluegrass, on the west end of that development there, where Secretary it is, where you have a high density of homes on sanitary sewer, or not on sanitary sewer service, where they were allowed to develop on septic systems. Right? So the 201 Plan was designed to work in concert with your development standards, or rather, the development standards, and they're supposed to work together. Right? And, you know, maybe this does, I just don't, you know, we don't necessarily, you know, not necessarily overlaying the two ideas to make sure that the Commission's ideas on lot sizes and development in that area match what text is being provided. Right? And I don't know any other simpler way to say that.
So I thought that the lot sizes were being changed to five-acre lots instead of one-acre lots.
I think it's the way around, less than one acre.
Yes, please clarify.
No, it's not. The current agriculture zoning district minimum is one acre in the county. It was proposed to bump it up to five acres, simply because the state definition of an agriculture area in the Caris 100, which relates to planning and zoning, is five contiguous acres. So the idea was, well, let's bump it up to five as opposed to one. And just, really, it fell back because it just felt too aggressive, too fast. So the Planning Commission did not move it up to a five-acre minimum. It actually went up to 50,000 square feet, which is about an acre and a quarter, tad. So it actually did go from one acre, a little bigger, but did not go to five acres. They just felt it was too big of a jump, and it literally would stop anyone from building a house out in the county that either has an acre, or wanted to cut off an acre, or two acres, or even three acres to build a house.
I don't know that that's necessarily an accurate statement. I think it requires a decision be made. And I think traditionally, that the Health Department, in those situations, contacts the city, and the city where it's in their service area renders some sort of judgment on whether or not the subdivision works according to that. So to represent that it stops it is not necessarily an accurate statement.
Well, it would stop people from building houses on one acre or two acres. I mean, this whole issue on sewer or septic, that's not in the zoning ordinance. It's not there today. It's a subdivision regs issue if we wanted to establish some standards on when we connect to sewer or don't. Again, as you heard, you have a 201 Plan now. The city has jurisdiction on development issues when someone comes in and wants to build a building in that area. I guess the city can decide, connect or not connect. The zoning ordinance is silent on the issue of sewer or septic. It just says, here's the minimum lot sizes of various districts, and then if you want to go in and build, the assumption is, if you're close to sewer, you're going to connect to sewer, but if you're way out in the county, let's say out on Webster or something, and you want to cut off a one-acre lot, I guess what we're hearing is, we want to somehow figure out if that should be connected to sewer or not. I don't see that that's the role the zoning ordinance can play at all, unless there was some kind of provision in there on when we're going to require sewer connection. And I think that would belong in Chapter 1 anyhow, not in 4, 5, or 7. If we were to put something on, let's say, there's been issues raised on fire protection, or if you wanted to do sewer connection versus septic. And again, I've worked with an ordinance that attempted to do that. When do we connect to sewer? When do we not connect to sewer? But most of that fell back into the subdivision regulations. But the minimum lot sizes historically, one acre's been the number we have out in the county. I've got eight plats going to the Planning Commission this week. One of them cuts a fairly big farm up into multiple pieces, and they're mostly one acres down the county road, just like Mr. Scott described. That development pattern isn't the preferred development pattern, even in my opinion, but I don't know how you stop that unless you set the minimum lot size in ag to five or 10 or 20. We've got counties in Kentucky, it's 30-acre minimums. And the whole idea was to stop development out in the county and force it inward. So you can do that by, you know, we could make the ag district a five-acre district. The county did not do that, nor did the Planning Commission recommend that. They bumped it up from 43, 560 to 50,000 square foot. Our district that's new is slightly smaller because we just didn't want it to match. We had to make some, and again, as you heard, every lot has to stand on its own merits. You have to contact the Health Department, do a preliminary site evaluation. If you buy an acre that's out there right now, you can't guarantee you're going to get a house to work. You might need a bigger lot, you might have to do some other kind of system. You may have to pump the tank or put in a lagoon, who knows? But the zoning ordinance is silent on those issues. That's not something we have anywhere in that document related to sewer or septic development.
Let me follow your path here, because part of what you have articulated in the new zoning, in terms of objectives, is infill.
Yeah.
So what you're saying about one-acre lots is counter to that infill proposal.
Yeah, but the challenge you have is there's different kind of development styles. So somebody might want to build in the city or live in the city. There's other people that want a lot out in the county, or want two acres out in the county. So to just say, we're going to force everything into an urban environment on sewer, 10,000 square foot lots, there's clearly people don't want to live that way. They want to live out in the county and have their two acres or three acres, have a barn, mini farm, whatever. But I can tell you, we're having, according to our building inspector, we're having a boom year for residential development, best he's seen in several years. And probably 90, if not 95% of that's happening out in the county. We're building very few homes in Danville in an infill style, for whatever reason. We have lots available in Danville to build on, but for some reason, people are cutting off one-acre lots out in the county to build homes, and we're doing a bunch of them this year. And on five acres, and on 10 acres, and on 20 acres, and on, you know, we have more residential building, single-family, in the county than we currently do in the city.
But your recommendation was five acres?
Our recommendation was five, because the state law simply, the state law is confusing, by the way. There's a five-acre minimum for zoning, but it's a 10-acre requirement for tax relief, I guess, if you're ag exempt. So a lot of people want a 10-acre tract, but Caris 100 defines a continuous ag tract as five acres, where you either live or crops, corn, whatever. But it's not unusual across this whole state that counties have one-acre minimums or two, because if you set it at five, then the likelihood someone can go out and buy five acres at whatever cost and build a house is, you know, again, one acre is just a minimum. We've just historically had, and we've got it in this county. Not only that, we started smaller. We've got some folks here that live on King's Mill. Those homes are on septic, and your lot size is not even one. So we created quarter-acre lots, half-acre lots, three-quarter acre lots. To some point in time, we set the standard to one acre. So we've got lots all over this county on septic tanks that are less than one acre on a lot of roads. So the challenge, I think, you all have is you guys are in control of the city side. The county would actually, you know, most of this ag property's out in the county, and they wanted to keep it at one acre, and actually we bumped it up to 50,000. And that started with the Planning Commission. I proposed five acres initially in the book, and the Planning Commission just was not comfortable taking it there at this point in time. Mine was too simplistic. I was trying to say, hey, if it's zoned ag, it should be five acres, and then you're actually farming or raising crops. But the reality is, we historically have created one-acre districts since 2004 for residential purpose. We call them agriculture, but clearly they're residential in nature. So Planning Commission did not forward that recommendation. They just bumped it up slightly again. 50,000 is just a tad bit over an acre and a quarter. The goal is to push it up someday, I hope, but I just don't think we're there yet.
Could I change the subject?
Yeah.
Just a minute. One of the issues I had, or concerns I had, I suppose, is the site plan review. And I was wondering if Earl and yourself could sort of walk me through what we would require now and what we will require if we adopt the proposed changes.
So to clarify, and Mr. Scott, again, he sent you all a document, I think, today, and it had some notes I made. What's in front of you today does not include the site plan changes. Those have already been done. Those went into effect May the first. So that's not in this proposal. That's Chapter 3. And what the staff report said is, hey, something changed in the realm of site plan approvals that we'd like to raise a question about. So I can tell you what we used to do and what we're currently doing, and interestingly enough, we've been doing it since May the first, because that's when the new rule went into effect. So we now do site plans. We just have bumped up a threshold for commercial and up to 10,000 square foot.
What was it before?
It was pretty much everything you build goes through site plan approval to the Planning Commission in a public hearing setting, and the standards for a site planner is a checklist. So typically, that's a full set of engineered plans, that's an architect's involved sometimes. And sometimes, what I think the Planning Commission was attempting to communicate before is, there's some additions in the commercial setting that are so minor in nature, and if the zoning's right, for example, if you already have the zoning right, why would an applicant need to go through full-blown site plan approval to do a minor addition? A good example is the deck that Guadalajara did. You know, we think at 10,000 square foot and up, that probably needs to go to the Planning Commission. There's a lot more involved you need to look at. But a lot of this, and I made a list in that staff report for you guys of the ones we've done this summer, about every one of those are fairly small in nature. It started with our opinion, but the Planning Commission forwarded you that recommendation. You guys already adopted that, was we have and continue to catch those at the zoning permit phase. So the way things happened before May the first is, everything had to go through site plan approval, regardless of the size. And as soon as they're done, they turn right around and do a zoning permit, which is an administrative function, and we still do that at 20 cents a square foot. So Intellitech just put a storage building on the ground, it was $1,152 to come in and do a zoning permit. Had they had to do a site plan, too, they would also then had to file money, go before the Planning Commission to put a storage building behind the building, pay a fee, and then come back, and then we do the zoning permit. And ironically enough, we use the same document for the zoning permit review. So the issue is, do you do site plan approvals on everything, or do you do zoning permits on everything? And what we used to do is both. And now we're just doing zoning permits all the time, like we always have, at the same fee. But we're not doing the small-scale commercial or industrial. They go straight to the permit. And you've got to remember, the zoning would be correct. Typically, they already got a building, they're doing a minor addition or something. And again, I gave you a list of what we did this summer. We had several go through the Planning Commission, and then several went straight to the permit. Everything still gets a zoning permit on the back end. So that's the duplication right there.
So if you've got something light industrial, and they either find a lot zoned that way or a vacant building zoned that way, and what they put in is not necessarily what we would like to have in the community, what's the check and balance here?
Well, I think the assumption is somehow the public hearing, the Planning Commission catches that or sorts that out, and that's not accurate. The site plan at the Planning Commission is a checklist. It's A through T. If the zoning's right, you can't regulate the use. If they want to come in and do what's allowed in the zoning district, they can do that. The checklist is landscape, parking spaces, setbacks. It's a checklist on the functionality of the lot on what you're going to build, but you can't go in and turn the hearing into, hey, we don't want that on an industrial property. The Planning Commission can't make a decision. In fact, in the site plan review, the Planning Commission can't technically deny a site plan if it meets the technical standards of the document. Again, if they've got everything right on that A through T, the Planning Commission has no choice but to approve it. But like any hearing, neighbors could show up and say, hey, this is a site plan hearing. We don't want a Toyota dealership next to our neighborhood, even though it's on commercial. You can't force that dealership not to go there. All you're going to tweak is the technical things on setbacks, or how big the sign would be, or what the landscape buffers might be. Yeah.
Speaking of setbacks, are the setbacks decreased, I believe, in your proposal, or increased?
Well, that's one of the things Mr. Scott, I think, identified in his staff report. It was more of a general statement that setbacks have been decreased, or why are some of them decreasing? We walked through all 67 setbacks. There's 67 different setbacks in the book when you go chapter, district. 59 of them are actually the same or increasing. A handful did decrease, specifically, single-family rear setbacks went from 30 to 10. And in commercial districts, they went to zeros on sides and rears, only when they're adjacent to other commercial. When they're adjacent to residential, they actually increase. So overall, I would say the setbacks have increased, but I'm using, you know, 59 of 67. There are some that decreased, but most of them stayed the same or increased. And that was something that was right. And then we walked through, and you guys got my really crude notes that were emailed out, where I literally made it, we color-coded each one, walked through each one, and I showed which ones increased, which one decreased, which one stayed the same, then I made a tally over all of them. But there's 67 different setbacks when you look at all the different districts.
What about if I could just ask Stephen, Mr. Hunter, what about any changes on height?
Yeah, so that was brought up. Can you, I'm going to just pass this out. One of the commissioners at the last meeting suggested that we made some heights from whatever they were to none or NAs. Let me just generally say this about our height standards. The 2004 book pretty much used two numbers. In a residential setting, the height standard was 35 foot. So in pretty much all the residential districts, 35 foot. And in the commercial and industrial, and even the campus district, all 60 foot. And the challenge that we've had is, we clearly have buildings taller than that. When that standard was put into play, we already had buildings taller than that. But we set a 60-foot height requirement, for whatever reason. No one really knows why someone chose, it wasn't me, I didn't write the '04 book. But let's go to the 35 to start with. The 35 is interesting, because most of the homes on Lexington and some single-family are taller than 35 foot. But I think that standard was adopted from a 70s, late 80s, early 90s, where people were building ranch-style homes, split-level homes. 35 foot doesn't really typically work for a two-and-a-half-story house, or a story house with a bonus room. 42 feet is a typical residential standard, so that was revised in the book in the residential. So 35 went to 42, and you'd have to look at the residential. The page you have here on commercial, the 60-foot height requirement, again, can't latch on to any logic where 60 came from, but 60 is what we've had. Talked with the fire chief, and I've made some nuns, because historically, the ordinances I've worked with, you typically don't put a cap in highway commercial or industrial. And as I mentioned last time, I had to think really hard about what I've ever seen built over close to 100 foot. And I thought long and hard, and I remembered Independence Bank, build a building, it was 80 foot once. Churches that are in commercial zones are always over. That'd be getting up close to that 100 foot. So I think the issue that was raised by putting no standard, are we opening up the door for something really tall, unsightly, or incompatible with a specific commercial zone? I'm not that fearful of that because of the highway commercial area, that's all out on the bypass, and I can't imagine what would be that tall in that setting. But regardless, we put this, these are the new proposals. And initially, I thought, well, we'll just do 100 foot, or we'll do 80 foot. But when I was talking with the chief, and we were talking kind of out loud, the story, I forgot, I'd used stories before, especially in historic districts. So got to thinking through it and thought, you know, the GB district still works for 60. The central business or downtown, we just turned it from, for example, 60 or 80 or 100 to just four stories. That gives a little flexibility if someone's building something on the floor, the ceiling heights, four stories fits the downtown. And then in these other areas, highway business, we did put it 100 foot to put a cap. The chief said, got a new ladder truck that I think goes up to 105, 107 foot, something of that nature. And then in the campus district, we made it six stories, and the public district 40, or four stories, which would mostly be where your parks or schools would be. So I think by kind of going with stories versus specific height, it gives a little bit of wiggle room, depending on how they design a building, or pitch a roof, or something of that nature. But we did put caps then across the whole gamut of commercial zoning districts as opposed to any nuns or NAs. And we did the same in the industrial zone, too, which is two pages into this handout. We just, we had 100 on LI. And just so you know, LI and HI don't exist today. Those are zoning districts we currently do not have. The IBD, or Industrial Business Development, we put 100 there, and that did have 60 foot, which is pretty limited in your industrial settings. I think that's all I have on height. And now, these haven't been communicated to the county. The county's kind of moving towards a first reading. That's independent of you guys, and I want to make sure they see those, because again, I think these make sense across the board and are good catches. The only other thing that's in this handout that we didn't talk about, or again, are these short-term rentals or Airbnbs. I think you had a proposal before you at the last meeting, but the county has tweaked it slightly, and I'd be glad to go over that if you guys want to do that.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. Mr. Cottle's shaking his head no, and he said, please do.
Please don't.
I read it. It made sense to me, so.
Okay. Well, one change, the chart, again, we now have this chart lays all the uses out. The county added the Cs in single-family. That's one big change, where before, they would have been a blank, meaning they're prohibited. The county put Cs with asterisks, which means they're allowed as conditional use permits. And then if you go another page further, what they did in general, or two pages, is they're only allowing hosted-style Airbnbs, or short-term rentals. So again, there has to be someone on the property to rent rooms. You can't just rent a whole house at a time. So the county's approach is, in the ag, rural residential, and single-family, hosted-only style, not unhosted or dedicated. And after talking with them and talking, getting some phone calls, some people have relayed to me, well, that might make it more like a bed and breakfast, but that's not necessarily what the product is out there when people go and rent, short-term rentals. They like the dedicated. So the idea is, if you want to have those in your community, you know, I think the challenge we've got here is not whether we allow them or not, but how do we handle the bad actors, the folks that aren't, you know, working in the neighborhood the right way, where we have noise, or trash, or cars on the road, or whatever. And I think the county's attempting to solve that with going hosted, thinking, well, if there's someone on the property all the time, it's less likely that someone would have a loud party, or park a lot of cars irresponsibly. But the folks who are doing short-term rentals have told me, since this has come out, if they do this, it kind of kills the whole industry to some degree, because that's what people are mostly renting, are the dedicated style. And that's what they want.
And I think, even if they're prohibited, they're going to do it anyway.
And then it's an enforcement issue.
And then you have an enforcement issue.
And then you have an enforcement issue. So I would propose that we do an annual permitting process for the short-term rentals. And that, that kind of gets out of this realm
Absolutely.
into an actual ordinance that hopefully the county would mirror. I envision different, different levels for, for the different rentals, whether they're hosted, dedicated, what's the other?
Unhosted.
Unhosted. But is, is dedicated and unhosted kind of the same thing?
No, unhosted is more just, hosted means someone's on the property all the time, and you're renting by the room. Unhosted means it's not happening all the time. It might be, you're going to Florida part of the year, and you're renting a home, and you might do either version. Or you've been, you've been relocated for a job, you haven't sold your house yet, so you basically are, it feels like dedicated, but it could be both. Dedicated is truly, it's an investment property.
Right.
You're renting the home, either by the room, by the garage, by the whole house. You don't live here. It's being probably managed by a property manager, or something. And you're somewhere else collecting a check. Unhosted means you're probably around, and it's just, it's, it's more temporary, or it just happened part of the year.
You're at least onsite at some point in time.
Some point in time, yeah. Hosted means, the way the definition is, you're, you're on the property.
How are you going to do the enforcement part of this?
We've been talking about that. Right now Louisville started open, again, let me just back up. So most of the communities in the state are sticking with two general issues. The short-term rentals fall in the realm of overnight accommodations. Whether it's a hotel, motel, inn, tourist home, bed and breakfast, they're overnight accommodations. We're no different. Just got it in the category, overnight accommodations. But the question is, where are we going to allow certain kinds? You know, hotels aren't going in neighborhoods, but these could. And then Louisville then attempted to make those splits, put some rules in place, make it a permitting process, and it sort of backfired. But most of the cities in Kentucky are saying overnight accommodation, and the Ps don't start till you get to commercial. There is no allowance to do them in residential zones. They're just violations. Because some of the cities that are bigger than us are, are seeing what happens in the neighborhood when they populate heavily in the neighborhood. They're hard, they're hard to enforce. What's interesting is, I think the commissioner's got the right approach, is the zoning ordinance can't regulate that problem, but permitting, or bad behavior, code enforcement, maybe is where that needs to go. But most zoning, planning the zoning is just saying you can't do them in neighborhoods, because they just don't fit, they're not going to work out. We're taking an approach more like Louisville's, which is, we're going to possibly allow them in residential zones with some rules. There are light rules to say the best. But the real way this is going to work out is with maybe another way to enforce, again, bad actors, other problems like parking, or noise, or trash. And then there was an article in the Herald this weekend, that Lexington's smack dab talking about this right now. Again, are we going to allow them, are we not going to allow them? And then, how do we deal with those other issues that are the real issues? And what's clear is the zoning ordinance, I don't think, can do that. All of this is saying is, do we agree they're overnight accommodation? I'd say we agree. And where are we going to allow them? And we got a handful of rules, pretty basic. But the real issue is, how do we maybe permit those, either through business licensing or code enforcement? If we get a call like, well, when they're in their neighborhood, but we got a call about thirteen cars at a house, and a fairly large party. And in their neighborhood, it's all kinds of related stuff, related to a party house next door, basically. I don't think the zoning ordinance can address that. But that might be a different kind of ordinance, or a different way. You know, that issue's been brought up, noise ordinance. County doesn't have a noise ordinance, so we can't catch it that way. Got cars parking on the street. There's no signs on the street on King's Mill that say no parking, or whatever, so is that a violation? The real issue is, we've basically got an Airbnb owner that's just, again, causing neighborhood nuisances. And how do you police that, or enforce that in the future? And I'm telling you, I'm not sure the zoning ordinance can do that.
So you don't think we, you don't think we need to change any of this to reflect whether we were to make new ordinances?
I think they could work together if you wanted to do that. I think what other communities are doing to kind of stop it, and not get to that point, they just don't allow them in the neighborhoods. That's just what they do. They just don't allow them, you have to be zoned commercial. And it's such a big problem in other communities. Again, in the Herald article, it mentioned Boston, we're talking big cities. You know, I've talked to my counterpart in Bowling Green where I came from. They, they've got a ton there now, and they are not allowing them in residential zones. They send out code enforcement officers just to shut them down when they get a call.
What do you do about ones already there?
What's that?
What do you do about ones that are?
In their opinion, they've made an interpretation that they're overnight accommodation, so if they got there, they should have never been there. Even though they don't have a single rule in their book right now that says the word short-term rental. That's the general, so you're making an interpretation that, even in our community, that we've always said, what, what is overnight accommodation? You're renting rooms less than thirty-day duration. A regular lease starts at thirty days, anything under is overnight accommodation. Our book currently says, that has to be in a commercial zone. So if they're out there, you could make an interpretation that they're not there legally, yet we don't have any verbiage in our book about this new industry. So it, it's a gray area on what you do with the ones that are out there, or how you take an enforcement position that they're not, not allowed.
So what is Bowling Green doing about that?
They're just a violation, not allowed. Their chart, similar, just blank, 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 blank.
Well, you say not allowed, but they're already there.
When they get a call, they make them move. Shut them down, send out the code enforcement people, and tell them they can't do it. Fine them, file liens.
But are they shutting down?
That would be, would I be interested to know if that's really happening? Because again, you don't know till you get a complaint. And then I think they're probably just dealing with a handful of them. No, I don't think they probably are shutting them down. It's, how, how do you do that?
I think we can allow them with some sort of ordinance and rules, and permitting policy. And for instance, and Steve and I have had this conversation, I think, several times. If it's an annual permitting process, and, and it wouldn't be cheap. I mean, I'm talking upwards of five hundred dollars a year. But if you've had, say, three complaints in the previous year, you're not going to be issued your permit. And maybe there's some sort of probationary period, or steps that you take to get into compliance, or show that you will be in compliance, things like that. I just don't think it's a good idea to prohibit them completely, because I think our enforcement of that also goes away, because they're going to do it anyway.
Don't make a rule you can't enforce.
So I'm not, I have a hard time believing I'm going to say this, but I actually did this, and this, so when, when I was in Bowling Green, we had a problem with Greek Row around the university. We had twenty-three different fraternities, sororities, or, or actually other organizations. Some of them were religious organizations, like the Baptist Student Center, or whatever. And, and so, the reason I say this is very similar in nature what happened. The question was, how could the zoning ordinance regulate bad behavior on Greek Row? We clearly said where you could put a fraternity or a sorority. So how do we then deal that next tier down? Parties, property maintenance issues, parking? And we created this ridiculous process where, once a year, we, the planning commission, we went in with the fire and building, and did fire and building inspections. Literally down to, hey, you got extension cords the wrong way. But then we looked at neighborhood complaints, parties, police calls, and we determined that this year Sigma Nu had a bad year. You got a ton of calls, guess what? And every year, you had to get this certification to be a fraternity the next year. So from just saying where they could be, we got into basically policing behavior. And if you had a bad year, there was a board, a university, it's called University District Review Board. And once a year, we went through with those twenty-three organizations and said, this one had a good year, this one had a good, this one had a good fire inspection. And every year, it was the same ones. AGR, Sigma Nu, Sigma Chi, Phi Deltas, bad, bad, bad. And we literally would put them on probation. We'd say they had, they could have no homecoming activities. We literally did this every single year from the planning commission. It was painful to do this process, and to get this information once a year, but we basically were policing behavior for the Greek Row, and making, and putting people on suspension through a board.
You had good cooperation from the university, too, though, right?
Oh, they loved it. They thought it was great, because they didn't have to do it. That's exactly what was my opinion. I thought this, who wrote this? Well, they helped us write it, actually. But that's what we did. We got down to police calls. We'd grab a police log and literally say, hey, party, party, fight, 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 parking violation. And we'd call them and say, look, another bad year, Sigma Nu, so I guess you guys are sitting out this year. And then their parents would start calling, and we'd, it's just a disaster.
And I think that's maybe not as strict, but I think that definitely will weed out the legitimate ones versus the people that are just throwing it out there to see what happens.
That's the only process we've ever seen in this book of that nature. Most of those are always in another ordinance somewhere.
Right.
Or universities handling it differently.
So, but, but this would, would we need to change anything on here if we went down the road of, of the ordinance and those types of rules?
I think, like Mr. Scott, we've talked, I think the real discussion is, do you want those to say Ps, or Cs? And that, that's, R1 district, that's brand-new. That, I'm only showing you this because this is what the county is choosing to do. Yours, yours that you had last did not have those Cs in R1. So if you wanted to do that, and open them up to that district as conditional, then I think we, we need to create an ordinance before January, before this would go into effect, if you guys saw fit to pass this.
Conditional use permits require a public hearing?
Yeah, they'd have to go before the Board of Adjustments.
So.
We've got one next week, in fact.
I think.
Neighbors could chime in, and.
Well, but I think a permitting process would be better.
Yeah, the way this is now, if they say C, they got to go through the hearing first. And then they, then the permitting would kick in, I guess, after that. The other way is, you could make them permitted by right. And then the, then the permitting, permitted as a use, but then go through the licensing process separate. The danger there, if you, the Cs kind of might be a stopgap, where someone's not sure they can do it. When the Ps are, they can move in, and maybe they don't get their business license yet. That becomes an enforcement issue. But we really need them to work together somehow. And again, I'm not a hundred percent, we have a major problem here. We've got a handful of the sixty or so that are problems. And ones on this street, and around the lake, but we're not getting calls every single Monday that we got thirty of these guys out there that are just, you know, becoming nuisances. And most of them operate just fine, you don't even know they're there. But other towns are, have hit that tipping point, unfortunately.
And for us to have sixty, I mean,
It's amazing.
Two years ago, we had fourteen or fifteen.
We had thirty in May.
Last year, yeah, yeah.
Or, or April, May. We've almost doubled over the summer.
It's snowballing, and we need to get control of it.
That's the issue, I think we need to be mindful of. Maybe it's not a problem, but in a year from now, what if we have two hundred?
Right.
And they're in all over neighborhoods. We're going to start getting calls.
And it's also a way to make sure they're paying their taxes. Because if they don't have their taxes paid, then they're not going to get their permit.
Could we, I'd be interested in what our CVB director might have to say.
Yeah, I, I would, too.
I, I don't, I don't have really a huge opinion on this. I think that, I will tell you that it's about three percent of our budget. I think, Steve, are you counting actual bedrooms? Because our records show we have about twenty-seven properties.
We're just going on the website and grabbing all the listings and checking their addresses.
Yeah, that's what we have, too. Well, I, I don't, at any rate, it is not a huge part of our economy. I think it's nice to offer. I would be in favor of completely eliminating them in residential areas. Yes, I don't think that if you're living in green acres, you expect to have an Airbnb next door to you. And I think that that is an easy way to keep the lid on it. But CVB will go along with whatever y'all decide.
Thank you for your opinion. Mr. Mayor
Yes, sir.
and Commissioner. Procedurally, I think we need to give thought, and maybe Mr. Hunter can guide us in terms of what needs to occur with the city and the county in terms of having further discussion and reaching agreement on these changes.
So the county's ready for a first reading next week with the changes you see in red, minus the height. The height's more on your all side, I want to take that to them. So we have a similar book, although they don't have obviously as much commercial property out in the county. I wanted to show you their changes. That's why the cover of that says city-county edits. This is like a point in time, and we may have more edits that come forward. The goal is to have the same book, I hope. The challenge we have is the ninety-day clocks running under the state law when you have a recommendation to approve, or deny, or amend. So trying to come up with a list of proposed amendments to this draft, and then trying to get both sides to agree, I hope that we could do that. It may not be possible. I mean, for example, you guys talked about going back to five-acre ag district. You could change your book to say, you don't have a lot of agricultural property in the city. But you could make the standard in City of Danville five acres, if you chose to. You guys can take your books wherever they need to be, we just would have to put different covers on them, that's all. But, but I think I'm, I'm willing to go back to the county, and if you guys have a suggestion. But I think, looking at their suggestion, in the single-family districts specifically, I think you guys need to probably come to some consensus on whether you're thinking you'd want them in R1, or not allow them in R1, which the original proposal was not to allow. And then the county's committed to hosted-only in those ag, RR, and R1 would be hosted-only. And they're pretty firm on that, although one magistrate has suggested a different approach, and they may discuss it again. I don't know how we come together on this, and then ultimately you all have a reading, or two readings, to get this ratified before the ninety days runs out. In addition, again, the goal was to have an effective date of one-one-twenty-twenty, to have a window so people could adjust to change, or operate under the old rules, or whatnot. So I'm open to whatever gets us there. And again, if you guys think you're interested in putting the short-term rentals in R1 with some rules, then it would match their book right now. But they've committed to hosted-only in those districts, to deal with the behavior issue.
I guess I would be curious to see how many are currently hosted versus non-hosted and dedicated.
Well, in general, we'll tell you, we can't get on the website. Because the way the platform works, you know, until you book a room, we can't even get an address location, technically. We're, we're making inference, trying to figure out, we know where that is. We've gotten some complaints. There's a way we can kind of sneak around, the way we do our enforcement.
Jamie actually spends a significant amount of time during the day working on it, and she'll contact the PVA to try and get the information to contact them. We have packets that we mail. I'll tell you, to say to have an Airbnb hosted will much more fit into a B&amp;B, at least in Boyle County. In fact, the main user of Airbnb specifically looks for unhosted. That's the point, you want the property to yourself.
Right.
So to say hosted, you're talking about a whole different kind of property and outcome. So no, the majority we have are unhosted.
So we attempted to get all the ones that we think are out there, and just figure out what zoning districts they were in. And we did that at a point in time, and gave that to you, too. And at that point, we're around forty or so.
We really were comfortable with the conditional use permit process. You know, I think having a public meeting, whether it's Board of Adjustments, or whatever it is, people have the opportunity to come out and know what's happening where they live. And as a property owner, I think you have that right. So eliminating the public process, I think, is of great concern. So sticking with the conditional use permit, but, but you get into residential area, and even then, it's a little harder. But I think the conditional use permit, from our perspective, solves a lot of those problems, because at least you're giving the people the opportunity to participate in the process.
You said most of ours are unhosted?
Yes.
Or dedicated.
Dedicated is what we would call them, yes.
Which means?
And so the flip side to Airbnb is, when they work well, you have properties down on Grant Street, for example, amazing Airbnb hosts. They do really wonderful social media and promotion for Danville. They took a dilapidated property and renovated it to increase the property values. They're responsible, I mean, so there's a lot of positives to Airbnb, too.
Sure.
But I think keeping it limited and residential, and having the public process is important.
But that property that you speak of is in a residential area, and it is not hosted?
No, I know. I mean, it's a double-edged sword. I do think the grandfather thing needs to be revisited. I, I think that that's a big part of it. If you add a permitting process, then you're going to have to add the staff to deal with the permitting process, too. It's, it's only as good as, so you create, I'll tell you, the amount of time we spend trying to get transient room tax. And, and it's not that people don't want to pay, it's just a process to get people on board and educated. It's a significant amount of Jamie's time, to, as opposed to it's two percent of our budget. So we really struggle with that. So it would take a lot of staff, too.
And that's what Louisville's finding out right now, and Lexington's worried about. And that's what Louisville's finding out right now, and Lexington's worried about. Both of them are concerned of they, whatever, you know, how much time's it gonna take to figure this out and police this long-term? Honestly, the way I, I see it, if you're gonna allow it in the ag district, and we just talked, we got one-acre ag lots, they're not truly agricultural 10-acre farms, we got people doing them out there on quarter acres and one acre. These are residential lots in nature. And you're gonna allow it in the rural residential, then the R1 is an extension, it's a house on a lot that someone lives in, and they either wanna rent it by the room, or they wanna go out of town, live in Florida half the year and rent it, or they want to buy a house and just flip it in 30, less than 30-day rents instead of 30-day, or 60-day, or 12-month leases. The whole idea is what's happening in the house. People are basically coming in, eating, sleeping, parking their car, and they're just not residing in your community long-term.
Except for the valley, there's though.
Yeah.
They love everything, right?
Yeah.
Wow.
This is why you all get elected and we don't. You are drafted to me. We don't really have a recommendation on that, that aspect of the hosted versus dedicated, just don't at this point.
I believe the comment was made that from, from the CVB's budget, it's not a large part of your budget, but if it's a significant activity, it's gotta contribute to the economy here in Danville.
Has to.
Because you got new people coming in that are not gonna cook in their kitchen, and they're gonna go out and see what, what's here and spend money, so...
Now, now, there's some interesting literature out there, and came, these guys gave it to me and some others, and you heard this before, that there are communities where, this is such a trend, and such an investment opportunity, that you're losing rentable housing stock, because everyone's realizing you can rent a house, as opposed to putting it out there for a year lease and dealing with what you do when you lease with tenants and pets and not paying the rent, that you can go this route and make money, make the mortgage, or make an investment. And at the same time, it's positive for the community, it's positive for the person renting the unit, but at the same time, you're depleting rentable housing stock. It's the same houses. We're not building houses that do Airbnb, it's the exact same houses that traditionally then someone could come in and rent for 12 months, and live there five years, or whatever. The other part of the article is, you're losing viability of neighborhoods, in this sense. The people are coming and go, let's say we got a neighborhood of 30 homes, and all of a sudden, we're, 20 of them are Airbnb, or 10 of them. You don't have neighbors that know each other, that are talking, that they're, you know, you just don't have a true neighborhood, because you've basically got transient people coming and going in more than normal, and you just don't build relationships in neighborhoods and friendships, and, you know, all the things we historically have done in a neighborhood setting. That you're losing that aspect, kids playing together, or whatever, people growing up next to each other. You don't, you don't have that when everything's now a mini hotel in a neighborhood. So there's, there's articles all over the place on this right now, about pros and cons. What we, what we know for a fact is they're happening, and they're happening fast.
Yeah. And that's the sad part about our society, is that we're losing our residential neighborhood identity all across small-town USA. This is another example of how it's changing.
And, and again, coming from a fairly big college town, this was dealing with owner-occupied homes going to rental homes, specifically for students. This whole area of us dabbling into who rents and who doesn't rent, and who owns, and this is, this is slippery slope we don't need to be in under fair housing issues and things.
That's right.
Trying to figure out who's there, you know, to make an interpretation, hey, people shouldn't be renting the houses, should all be owner-occupied, that's, we can't do that. And so now, when into this realm, we're starting to figure out who's coming and going, and how are we gonna handle transient folks, and should people know who's living next door? I mean, these are not things that historically the Planning Commission needs to be involved in, we're not the bedroom police. Our goal is just the use, and does it fit the district? And then are there some sensible rules? But trying to figure out these issues, hosted, unhosted, how many people, where'd they come from, you know, I mean, I mean, this is just something we don't typically do in, in thinking about residential properties. People rent their home if they want to, and, and there's nothing wrong with that. Now they're renting them less than 30 days. The difference is, less than 30 days versus...
Yeah.
A month at a time. And we're trying to figure out what's good or bad about those splits, and I'm just telling you, that, that's a slippery slope we don't need to be involved in, I, I think.
Well, we've always had absentee landlords, that just happened to have been, until the last few years, long-term rentals. So maybe they were problems, maybe they weren't.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a bit of a mixture, that's for sure.
I, I just don't think we need to prohibit them completely, because then it's gonna go down another road that we may or may not be able to control or enforce.
I'll just say, if you, if you all are thinking about putting them in the R1, we'll do whatever enforcement has to be done, if that's where we end up.
I like the conditional use requirement, to give the neighbors, you know, a chance to chime in.
And that would involve annually? A permitting process annually?
A conditional use is not.
No, I think what we're hearing is, we would put, we would open them up to R1 districts as a conditional use, but we would attempt to build some kind of permitting standard.
Okay.
Either, I guess it could be through the zoning ordinance, or it could be standalone city-side, county-side, through your business licensing process, to try to attempt to deal with the behavioral issues, or maybe other...
And the only thing that concerns me about conditional use is, what if a lot of neighbors come out in one area that are against it? And then that property would not be allowed? As opposed to, what if there is another property that no one opposes, and then it is allowed? So that's kind of the main concern that I have, is the consistency, the consistency.
That's one of the downfalls of conditional use permits, anyway.
Right, right.
Well, that's the whole issue, is the conditional use permit, what are we quantifying when you have a hearing? And what we tend to have is a head count. So people show up and say, "I don't want that, I just don't want it." But what if the applicant is proposing to get the parking right? "I don't wanna sign." They, they attempted to scale it just right, but it's not unusual that 80 people could still show up, or 40, or 10, and say, "I'm against it." On what basis? "I just don't want it in my neighborhood." The Board of Adjustments, it helps if there's some standards that they can sort of check off, and say, "Well, if the applicant's done this, this, and this," even though there's 80 people here, it still should be approved, because it fits, it's compatible. We've got one next week on Main Street, Bed and Breakfast, and we've not got a single call. Signs been out, letters went out, not a single call. My guess is there won't be anybody in this room next Thursday, and the board will probably ask them questions, but the issue is, does parking still matter, whether there's people in the room or not? It does.
Yes.
So if the applicant's doing the right things, it wouldn't matter if every seat's full in here, the board, in my opinion, probably should pass it, if they proved and met all the standards. If we don't put standards in place, and that's the challenge, then it's just a matter of what people's preferences are, they're just saying, "I don't want it." And it gets to that, and that's gonna get denied, just basically on the number of people in the room. But I think the Board of Adjustments is trained enough to think, you know, they've got, they've got a standard on what they're supposed to make findings on, but it helps if there's technical standards. You know, this kind of buffer, this kind of parking space, sign or no sign. I think that helps, and that's historically how we've done bed and breakfasts.
Well, and I think, e- even if we do, I, I don't, it doesn't really matter which way we do it, but even if we do the conditional use, it needs to be very specific and, and very tight with very few variances that can happen.
Well, we've got 11 standards that we attach to the back that go with that, so the board has 11 clear directions. And it relates to parking, and how many rooms you can rent, and whether or not they're doing other activities, and on and on. But that wouldn't still stop, a certain kind of conditional use in a certain neighborhood wouldn't generate kind of a rallying of the troops, and you look up and you got 30 people here that are just against it. And the applicant does everything right, they, they still could lose, and that's just part of the process.
Right.
They could always appeal, that's part of the process, too.
And one of the commissioners mentioned a, a conditional use, and that it be a process that gets reviewed every year, or periodically?
Well, conditional uses in the law have to be reviewed. The state law requires, I think it's, might be 250, 150, 253, I'm not sure, but conditional uses are what they just sound like. They're not forever. They run with the real estate. When they're approved of variance or conditions, they're attached to your real estate. They run with the land, they don't run with the owner unless there's a condition of that nature, there's just a sunset clause. But the state law says, the Planning Commission staff is supposed to review all the conditional uses on an annual basis and make sure they're still in compliance. Now, I don't know how you do that for 500 or 600 conditional use permits, but in theory, every planning commission in the state is supposed to make sure all their conditional use permits are in good standing. That's impossible, but...
Well, good standing to these qualifiers, but what if I, I've gotten 25 complaints over the course of the year, and you review by?
I'm gonna review what you agreed to. So for example, most conditional use, and I'll use like this one we've got coming up this week, the things they've agreed to relate to parking, signage, the number of guests, and they're gonna be hosted only. So we're gonna have four detailed conditions that we'll record with that real estate. If they were to violate one of those, that's a zoning violation. But if there's another issue, we don't tie into the conditions of the approval, I don't think we have any jurisdiction on those. Each conditional use is different. I mean, we did one for, uh...
Stiffenote was in there?
The Seeing Harts group out there, for their transition home, and you know, there was like eight or nine rules. Those become the conditions of that approval, and those are enforceable, because they're now attached to the real estate. If the, if the fifth one was no parties, or they have, and we don't have it locked in, noise related, I don't know how we enforce those things, so we lock them in with the conditional use permit.
Yeah, 'cause if, if a roomful of neighbors show up in opposition, and they're all my age, 39 or over, and they're concerned about his fraternity or sorority, you know, how do you get those types of things into a document?
Well, interesting enough, the fraternity example I mentioned to you was not a conditional use permit. Going back a step further, for years and years and years, a fraternity or sorority had to go through a conditional use permit process. And the Board of Adjustments would have a hearing for a new fraternity till midnight, and the room would be packed, and they would deny one after another after another. So the university got frustrated, saying, "Look, they're always gonna lose." So they made it a, the fraternity sororities were permitted by right with these neighborhood kind of behavioral rules. If you did them conditional, there's certain things that are gonna draw a crowd every time, fraternities, dog kennels, junkyards.
And what we're talking about, really, it's not really fraternity and sorority in our community, it's a single-owned family property that's been abused by large groups of people.
Well, here's what I hear all the time. The people that are against it will say, "I don't like not knowing who's coming and going next door."
Sure.
That's what I hear all the time. So I'm against it, because there's more chance for people coming and going when it's Airbnb than if it's just being, let's say I, I'm a landlord, and I, I rent it every six months, it's somewhat different. You're gonna have the same type of thing, just not the frequency. But I hear that all the time, is that's one of the issues we're worried about, is we don't know who's coming and going next door.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, how are you gonna regulate that in a conditional use permit hearing? What kind of condition would you lock down that, before you rent it, you gotta notify the neighbors, all the names, and... And, and funny enough, the Louisville, or the Lexington proposal talks about how many nights a week you're gonna be able to rent the units? Or how many each year you can rent the units? Theirs is getting down to that level, that you can only either rent it once time a week, or no more than X number a year. I don't know what that addresses either.
Yeah, that's true.
I think at this point in time, you all really need to think about, do we want allowed in the R1 district, which used to be our GRA, by condition? And then we need to decide if we're gonna try to build another process to maybe coexist with that, or we're just gonna ride it out and see what kind of complaints we get, and, and try to deal with the problems that we really have pop up. At this point, the only problems I've got are, is really this, their neighbor issue, and it's parking, and noise, and trash. Is really the issue. It's not, are the folks sleeping comfortably, and is the house accommodated enough? I mean, it was built to have that many bodies in it, seriously, those are actual real issues, too. It's, it's, it's neighborhood and noise and inconvenience nuisance-related issues to the neighbors. And they're, and they're serious ones.
So on this conditional use in R1, or R2, R3, or R4, could the chart say, for an example, in RS1, that's got a C with an asterisk, and then it also could have a second asterisk that says county only, or C only?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we could, we could make it that specific.
It's up to you all. I mean, if the county was, this is the county's proposal, if you all choose to not allow it, I would actually, it would say, it would actually be in the back, it'll say county only.
Okay.
That's exactly what we'll do.
So we simply have it in the same document?
Yeah, we could do that. We could just have in parentheses, "Danville only," or "Boyle County only," for sure.
Okay.
Are you seeing any direction on that tonight, or...
I don't know. We, we need, again, I guess you...
Clock is ticking.
I guess going back to what Mr. Scott's saying, we really need some direction if you guys are, because at some point, if you think you're moving towards an approval of the document with modifications, the city attorney and the city manager need to know, that's where you are heading with the whole document. If there's specific things you guys want to amend, I need to know. So number one, I can relay them back to the county, and Parable, by the way.
Yes.
And then two, your city attorney, if he's preparing an ordinance to approve, you know, we got 110 pages, we gotta make some addendums to those pages. Maybe just attach a document like this to it. But clearly, we gotta know what we're passing, if we're passing it, or what we're rejecting, if we're rejecting, or what we're modifying. So some consensus on those two issues, on where you are heading with the overall text amendment, and then where you're heading with some of these specific things related. In front of you all, you've got height and short-term rentals right now, but if there's another issue in the book you wanna change, we can do that, too.
Well, let me ask you another question.
Yep.
At our workshop, you attempted to go through this new document, and you highlighted key, important parts. So my question is, had you finished before we ran out of time, pointing out all the key things?
I didn't go through five as much detail.
Okay.
But five is, is more the chart, and where things go. I think four, we went through in pretty good detail, exactly how I thought we should. There's a lot more in there, we could've walked through every single page and spent, I mean, the Planning Commission, again, spent eight hours in hearings, advisory committee met, a dozen hours, three months. To walk through every page is however you guys wanna get there. Article five is basically a use chart, and all the kinds of uses across the spectrum, and where things go and where they don't go. I would have not walked you through every single line, but I probably would've pointed out some big-ticket items like the pipeline, and I did just point out the Airbnb. The county, in a sense, it sounds weird, it doesn't relate to you all, but there's a page in there that sorta attempts to build a leash law out in the county, just in residential subdivisions, just actually named residential subdivisions that would be zoned. We actually put a standard in there for the keeping of, you know, domesticated animals. That wouldn't really relate to the city, because you guys have your own rule there. So there's some things in there that are more county-side or city-side. Five is just the chart, then those specific rules. All those asterisks reflect to the rest of the five, so I don't think I would've went through too much there, unless you all had specifically asked me any questions on five.
Okay.
There's a lot in five, too, though.
Oh, I know.
Steve, one of the other questions, I think, that's, that's come up is, how will enforcement change, or will it change, from the way it is now to the way it's proposed? Will it, is there any change?
Anything in the zoning ordinance, anything that's a zone change, or a recorded development condition, is the Planning Commission's responsibility to enforce. We don't do grass and trash and weeds, you all know that, you got staff to do that. But we do anything in the zone, and we're doing it now, signs specifically, uses, setbacks, illegal structures, we do those now, and we're, we're doing them every day. I do them actually personally, and then Lisa does some. I tend to go out in the county, and I had to go out in Ward's branch, she wasn't comfortable going out there and telling someone to move a trailer, so I went. We got a guy tearing down a building in the county that's over the setback line. He had an option to get a variance or move it, and he didn't want to do the variance, so he's moving it. Literally one piece of metal at a time, just to mess with this. But yeah, I'm doing it personally, so that we're not, I don't see any change in enforcement at all. Now, it may get so daunting someday, we need to figure out, hey, do we need more staff? We had a position there full-time to just do enforcement, and there just wasn't enough work there, honestly. So I'm, we're only getting about, probably about, I guess, we might hit 20 cases this year, that's all, for zoning enforcement.
But it's complaint-driven.
It's complaint-driven. We don't drive around and...
Right.
Except for signs. We drive around and look for signs in the right of way. But the problem with zoning is, if someone's running a catering business in their basement, you know, we can't drive around, see those use violations. We normally get calls, then we go out and deal with them. And we're doing those now, I'm doing them myself, Lisa's doing the notices of violation. We haven't written a single citation this year. Every single case has either been brought into compliance. We don't have any open cases that we need to cite at this point in time.
One, one final question, then. You've passed this document, and you sent it to city and county governmental bodies for approval. I've had probably two or three people last week, once we had our presentation, stopped me with some concerns about different aspects. Is there an opportunity or a method for individual citizens or groups of citizens to still bring to P and Z some concerns or thoughts about this document?
No, unfortunately, the way the process works is the Planning Commission, the statute says that, when we're, this is a text amendment as opposed to a map amendment.
True.
And it says they originate with the staff, the city, any of the member governments, or the Planning Commission. So we've created a text amendment. We've had multiple hearings over three months. Lot of coverage in the paper, but not everyone reads the paper, I understand. We didn't have a lot of opposition. We went out, met with groups. Jeff's here, he organized something for the business owners on, specifically on signs. We had good turnout. We've met with the technical folks we know that use the book. If their citizens have concerns, they either miss their window of opportunity at the Planning Commission to actually be part of the record. And really, it's this part of the point where they could communicate to you all as legislative members a concern, and you guys could either raise them and move them into the book, or you could reject the entire text and say, start over Planning Commission, and make sure those people are part of that hearing process. Because again, we had hearings for the months of June, July, and August.
You don't want us to do that, and we don't want to do that either.
We're honestly, we're honestly open to whatever. It's your book, I said that. You guys do what you see fit. And you think citizens didn't have an opportunity to get into this. But what typically, I think what I'm hearing, maybe a little bit in that comment, is somehow there should have been more outreach, or we should have just had, come on down, look at the book. But we had hearings, my attorney and my chairman directed, that as opposed to working with people one-on-one and compromising, negotiating, the best thing to do was to put it all in the hearing record. If someone wanted to come down and challenge, or have a discussion, this sits over there. Stand here, state the case, let's get it into the record. So you guys would have an accurate transcript of everything, every concern that related to the document. We could have went out and just one-on-one, said, hey, what do you think about this? Well, I'll change that, because they want that. But we did not do that, as much as just put the draft out for public consumption, meet with some groups, like the business owners on signs, but then invite everyone to the hearing to get their comments on the mic and into the record, or on the video.
Well, I, I just want to say, we are not discounting your hard work, nor the Planning Commission's hard work at all. We just want to make sure that we understand what we are passing.
Sure.
And it's a huge document with a lot of detail and nuances, but I appreciate your work on this. And we are not in any way trying to diminish that.
It doesn't, we're neutral on it. At this point, we're sending a rec, the Planning Commission sent your recommendation, nine to zero, I don't vote. It's just a document, there was a lot of time involved, but at the end of the day, again, you guys either adopt it, reject it, or modify it. That's where you're at. Unfortunately, you have to do that in that 90-day window, or it becomes law by default.
Is it, what, the November, the second reading in November?
About November, ideally, if we had reached agreement at our next meeting, we should get first reading, and then the first meeting in November, give second reading. That would avoid November 25th, last-minute action, and I think November 25th.
Yeah, we met on the 28th, but if you do the 90 days, and September's got 30, I think you're right. It's going to be somewhere around November 26 would be the cutoff, and you all have to have two readings, one way or the other. Even to reject it, you guys have to formally reject it, too, by ordinance, and make findings contrary to the Planning Commission's findings. I mean, it's, it's, it's a formal recommendation, just like a zoning map amendment.
Well, and, and I want to say, it's been good to have the presentation, and to have time for feedback among ourselves, and from the county, and from you, and your group, and everybody else. And it, it's, it's a document that people out there in the public are buzzing about it.
Sure.
In, in a good way, I think. You know, and they're voicing concerns, tuition, whatever. So it's, it's a good process.
Well, I want to compliment Mr. Scott, because he suggested having this work session. Now, most of the time, I've passed dozens of text amendments, they come to the city commission, and they try to consider it right in a regular meeting agenda. You know, item number 10, what do we do, first reading? Something's done. But we backed this up, slowed it down, broke it in two halves, the whole thing from, and then we're having a work session to discuss this before we get to a first reading. So I think that's even better. And, and that was his idea, and so we're going as slow as you need us to, but unfortunately, the 90 days then picks back up on the tail end here. So we didn't hear a consensus on the other thing.
So let's talk about logistically how we want to go about this.
Yeah, what, what do we need to do? I mean, I, I'm...
Yeah, that, too.
Do, do you need some action today?
Well, I think the action...
We don't have action authorized today. I think it's discussion, and action could come as early as our next meeting.
Do I hear a motion, we adjourn? Yes, sir.
Do we need to address the short-term, short-term rentals now?
Can.
I think Mr. Hunter was kind of hoping we might.
I just want to communicate with the county, or if clearly we're...
Well, right now, if it is in a residential area, zone, it is by conditional use, the way it stands right now. And now that I've talked it out, and we're, have absorbed it a little more, I would be okay with seeing how that goes, and maybe if we have issues...
Fair enough, yeah.
You know, we can always change it to make an ordinance.
Can, I'm sure we can change it, how difficult would the change be?
Well, the way the chart is, it's simple as just taking the C back out through an amendment. The difficulty is, you may get some happen in the interim, but then get grandfathered in. You know, if we go the wrong direction here, and we get another 10 of them, through conditional use...
No, no, I'm, I'm asking if we go down a certain direction...
Right.
And decide a year from now...
I'll just tell us.
It's not working.
I mean, you could direct the Planning Commission to amend the ordinance. Again, a text amendment starts with the Planning Commission, the city, or the staff, and you guys could say, look, we need to amend it, go back and figure something out, solid on the whole thing, research it, bring us a new proposal. I mean, it would be that simple, but it would probably take, you know, a few months to get it done.
We've talked earlier, I think, Steve, about conditional, it's permitted under conditional approval, and you may have some conditions listed for the approval, but could you also not have, and also subject to any permitting requirements that the city may impose?
Sure.
Simply as a blank sheet there, and we can develop those, if that would survive.
Ron, has staff's concerns been addressed?
I, I think we've had a good discussion, and I think many of them are. You might be satisfied as an elected official that we have a sufficient process for the review of, of commercial development. Again, it's not as robust as we've had before, but if that meets the threshold, or satisfies the commission, I think we're satisfied, certainly.
I'd say, let's, let's direct staff to go ahead with the ordinance, and shut down this part of the meeting.
Is that your motion?
It is.
Seconded.
And I have a motion made, Mr. Sarris, seconded by Commissioner Cardle, discussion?
Let me also remind you that we don't have in special session authorization to take action, but I get the gist of what you're saying.
So you don't need a motion?
You don't need a motion, no.
So withdraw your motion?
You don't want to draw your motion, sir?
But, but I think that there should be...
They were just looking for consensus.
There needs to be a list of changes that we proposed, in that motion that's made, or that proclamation is written up, before, you know... Because if we're going to go, we got to decide about the C, we got to decide about the C being conditional, or not being there at all, and there's a couple of other things, just little editorials, I think. Whatever else we're going to change.
Motion withdrawn, I'd like for you guys to work on it.
Well, we can work on it, and at your next regular meeting, we can have the ordinance presented with the conditions and discussions that you've had, either A or B, and you can take action that way.
I'd move to adjourn, then.
Motion's made and seconded, in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
If those like sign, we are adjourned for nine minutes.
You're adjourned?
I am adjourned.